World to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Councilor Baker.
Yeah.
Councilor Siomo. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Jackson. Council Lamatina. Council Linehan.
Yeah.
Council McCarthy. Council Murphy. Council O'Malley. Council Pressley. Council Wu. Council Yancey. And Council Zakim. President, we have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I was to introduce Council Zakim. Or he was the one who had invited clergy here and somewhere between here and the church, the clergyman has not found his way. So we've asked our dear clerk to come up and to do an invocation and say a prayer at the beginning and then Council Zakim will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise as we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. To hear one another. The ringing of a bell calls us to worship. The pounding of a drum calls us to war. The popping of a cork calls us to celebration. What is the sound that calls us here? One another. Listen. Listen carefully. It is here in the silence. Listen deeply. The beating of our own hearts call us to ourselves. Calls us to be our true selves. Calls us to be our best selves. Calls us to be what we might become. Listen. There is another sound. The breath of our neighbor calls us outside ourselves. Calls us to be companions. Calls us to be allies. Calls us to be partners. Listen. We must heed the call of our own hearts. Where love and truth, caring and justice are born. Listen. We must heed the call of others. To gather together for some great purpose. Where passion and fidelity, compassion and equity are nourished. The hammering silence calls us together. That we may do the work we cannot do alone. Let us heed the calls that come in the silence. That we may be well and do good in the world together. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Maureen Feeney, for that inspiring message. Council Zakim will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Interelectual conflict for which it stands. One nation, united all. Beautiful liberty.
Thank you, Council Zakim. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Matt O'Malley to please come to the rostrum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask our friends and our neighbors from the MSPCA, the Animal Rescue League of the City of Boston, and the City of Boston's Animal Care and Control Center to please join me along with a very special guest. You know, Harry Truman famously said, "If you want a friend in Washington, get a dog." And I think that certainly applies in every city across this great nation. We, I know just many of you and your families have wonderful pets. I know growing up, dogs always were an integral part of the O'Malley family. And we're incredibly lucky that in this city, we have such great resources that are taking care of animals, particularly cats and dogs. We also have a great partnership with the City of Boston and some of our nonprofits, our hospitals, the Animal Rescue League, of course, out of the South End, Angel Memorial and the MSPCA, which is two blocks from my home in Jamaica Plain, as well as the incredible and vitally important work of the city's animal care and control shelter in Rosendale. I'd like to recognize some guests who are with us today. Amy Bowen is from the Animal Rescue League, ARL of Boston. Kara Holmquist is from the MSPCA, as is Amanda Lasko, and Laura Gretsch, who is our new Director of Animal Care and Control. Thank you and welcome to the City Council Chamber, as well as Patty Jones, who's worked there for many years and done incredible work. The Animal Rescue League yesterday kicked off its Hip to Snip campaign. Residents can go to arlboston.org/spayneuter for information about free and low-cost spay-neuter services. The MSPCA also offers affordable spay and neuter services. And this is such an important thing that we're doing. You know, we're having some fun today. We're recognizing a beautiful dog and some great organizations. And it's just so important to control the pet population, as Bob Barker said so famously for so many years. And it's great that we have the organizations that are able to do it at low cost, at very little cost, to make sure that these animals can be safe and be healthy. So we have a brief resolution that I'd like to read and then invite Kara Holmquist to say a couple of words. This is a resolution, part of today's consent agenda. It's a resolution in support of World Spay Day. Whereas World Spay Day brings attention to the importance of spaying or neutering animals and the need for affordable services in our communities; and whereas, according to World Spay Day, nearly 3 million healthy and treatable cats and dogs in shelters across the United States are put down each year; and whereas homeless animals, especially cats, continue to be a significant problem in Boston and Massachusetts; and whereas spay-neuter surgery is an effective and humane way to save animals' lives and prevent surplus litters; and whereas there are numerous programs sponsored by Boston-based nonprofits, such as the Massachusetts Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the Animal Rescue League of Boston, and other animal welfare organizations that offer low-cost spay-neuter surgeries, including a clinic in Jamaica Plain, and several spay-neuter events in the city's neighborhood in an effort to combat the problem; and whereas the MSPCA and the Animal Rescue League of Boston spayed and neutered more than 29,000 animals last year, therefore, be it resolved, the Boston City Council hereby assembled declares February 24, 2015, as World Spay Day and recognizes and thanks animal welfare organizations, including the MSPCA and the Animal Rescue League of Boston, for the great work they do to ensure good health for animals in Boston and throughout Massachusetts. Finally, many of you, if you haven't already, it's tax season. Taxes are due on April 15. There's now an opportunity, when you pay your taxes, to donate a couple dollars, however many you can, to these types of programs. And I'd urge everyone to do it if they're able to do so. It's so important. It's also important to adopt animals if you're looking. And please use either the city shelters, the Animal Rescue League, or MSPCA. These are wonderful places. We're joined today by Jenny Lee, who is seven months old, and a great example of these partnerships. Jenny was in the custody of the city's shelter. She spent her week or so there, and then MSPCA Angel just got her several weeks ago. She is up for adoption. She's absolutely precious, as you can see, and just a great dog. So please take advantage and support these wonderful organizations. I'm so delighted to represent a district where Angel Memorial is and so many others across the city. I know everyone feels the same way I do. So as we take a brief moment or two to recognize these great organizations and the great important work they do for animals, I'd like to ask Kara Holmquist to say a couple of words and maybe see how we can get further involved.
Well, I just want to thank Councilor O'Malley. We are so fortunate at the MSPCA to live in his district, District 6, and so appreciate his efforts on behalf of animals and taking the time to recognize the importance of spaying and neutering pets. The MSPCA is, you may know, we've been around for a long time, since 1868. We have two animal hospitals, one in Jamaica Plain and one for those outside the city in Waltham, and three animal shelters. One of those is in Jamaica Plain. We also have statewide law enforcement, which I feel very fortunate that we have. The statewide law enforcement comes at no cost to taxpayers. They're paid by the MSPCA, but they have cruelty, the ability to enforce the cruelty laws. So we can feel very good about if we see something, to report it and know that the MSPCA or the Animal Rescue League both have officers that can handle cruelty cases and do a great job at that. I just want to reiterate some of what Matt said. We're so fortunate in Boston to have the MSPCA, the Animal Rescue League, and the City of Boston Animal Care and Control Facility. We're really excited that the city has invested and is making some changes to that. And with these three big organizations, we can really expect Boston to be what it can be in terms of animal protection. We also have a lot of smaller groups, such as Boston Homeless Cats, a lot of wonderful caring volunteers that spend endless hours trying to help the city's cats and feral cats in our community. So I encourage you to call any of the three of our entities if you have any questions about animals. And again, appreciate all the City Council's effort over the years to help raise the bar for animals in the city. And again, Jenny is available for adoption. It's only four miles away, up Huntington. Take a left on South Huntington. She'll be there waiting for you. So thank you again, Council O'Malley and the rest of the City Council. Appreciate it.
All right, everybody heads up. You know they're not taking a picture of you, Matt, right? You get that, Carrie? Thank you, Councilor O'Malley, for your presentation today and for those from the MSPCA. At this time... At this time, I'd like to recognize a government delegation that's here with us today in the chamber from Kosovo. Would you please rise, those that are here, from the government delegation from Kosovo? Thank you very much for joining us. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Ayanna Pressley to come forward. Councilor Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. And that wonderful poem that was read by our distinguished clerk, Maureen Feeney, challenged all of us to sort of call the compassion and equity in our consciousness. And the group of individuals that I'm bringing before you today on behalf of all councilors certainly do do that every day. So in honor of Black History Month, I wanted to take a moment again on behalf of the entire City Council to honor and recognize the work of the Black Directors Alliance and their member organizations. You know, very often during Black History Month, we are recalling, revisiting, remembering oft-celebrated black heroes and heroines that are often popularly and widely known. But the members of the BDA are proof that black history is dynamic, it is alive and well, all around us. And that's why I wanted to bring the Black Directors Alliance, which was formed in 2013, and its 70 organizations, which comprised its organization across the city before the body today. The leaders of this organization are no strangers to service. Together, they have been working to build the beloved community that Dr. King so often spoke about. These organizations have provided critical social and economic services to people of color, immigrants, the poor, and working class for decades. These are smaller organizations who often face greater challenges securing funding, but they continue to rise to meet the demand for services and to stand in the gap. And so for that, we say thank you. So often, the work you do goes unnoticed. But we know that each and every day, you are changing and lifting up individuals and families in our great city. We are grateful for your work, and we want you to know that we notice it. I'd like to call Carla Nicholson, Executive Director of the Haymarket People's Fund UP, to accept the citation from the council on behalf of the Black Directors Alliance. Since the "whereas" is are lengthy, because they've all been quite busy, I'm going to start reading as she's approaching. Again, offered by myself and on behalf of all councilors, the Black Directors Alliance, the BDA, consists of more than 70 organizations and executive directors throughout the city. The BDA and its member organizations have been providing essential, social, economic, humanitarian, educational, psychological, spiritual, and other important services to people of color immigrants, the poor, and working class for decades. And whereas these organizations are an important economic engine in the city of Boston, providing jobs and serving as vital supports to local and community-based businesses; whereas securing public and philanthropic funding can be challenging for smaller nonprofits than for larger entities, but despite these challenges, BDA member organizations have been providing quality services in our communities for decades; and whereas with changes of leadership in Congress, a new governor, and additional cuts to social services expected, the BDA membership organizations will work to meet growing service needs with fewer resources; and whereas the BDA is an essential entity and the work of its directors and membership organizations has made a tremendous difference in the city of Boston, therefore, be it resolved, that the Boston City Council and meeting assembled recognizes the tremendous services and programs the Black Directors Alliance has for decades provided to traditionally underserved communities and to acknowledge the profound impact this entity and their member organizations bring to the general well-being and public good in the city of Boston. Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of the Black Directors Network in Boston, I don't stand here and accept this alone. I would love for the black directors once again to stand to their feet. These are the people, as Council Pressley... This is no small acknowledgment. We thank Council Pressley for the very thoughtful resolution that was presented today, because the work is tireless work. The work does not happen just simply because it is a job or it is a career. This work has to happen because of the necessity of what goes on in the community. Folks are fighting to make sure that children have safe schools to attend, that there's voter mobilization work, that reproductive rights occur. And I can go on and on and on. Reentry work. These are the people that are doing that work. And we're all doing it in a unified way. So it's a necessity that there be a network, that we not do it individually in a siloed way, so we will have an impact on what happens in the community. And as the counselor mentioned, the work we're doing is challenging. In the city of Boston, the resources to do the work are long and far between. We struggle separately. So now, as a collective, we can come together and we can raise the money and we can work together and we can seek ways, not just simply to support the people in the community, but to support one another as directors, so that we can stand tall and we can continue to do the work that is very necessary. So thank the council today for acknowledging our work. Thank you also to Horace Small from Unity and Minority Neighborhoods, who pulled us together. He is a master convener. He pulled us all together two years ago, because the need is there and the work will continue on. So thank you for this day. Please celebrate with us afterwards. And thank you so much for the acknowledgment. Yes, so you're all invited for a photo op. And then in the curly room, we will be thanking them for their civic contributions and their labor of love that they demonstrate every day for reception. So we hope you'll join us. But for now, please come up for a photo. That's me. Sorry. I apologize. You okay?
Take a look in the coat.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor Pressley, and thank the Black Directors Alliance for what they do every day in the city. Approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of the last meeting, they will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 0378, message in order authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $65 million in order to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, and interest on bonds or other obligations to be refunded and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds.
Docket 0378 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0379, message in order authorizing the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend a grant of $3,680,000 to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resource, Renewable and Alternative Energy Division Community Clean Energy Resilience Initiative Project.
Docket 0379 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment and Parks.
Now, read the next four.
Docket 0380 through 0383, please read.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0380, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Celia Whistlow as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 2, 2017. Docket number 0381, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dr. Paula A. Johnson as a member and chairperson of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for the remainder of the term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 03A2, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Harold Cox as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 1, 2018. And docket number 0383, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dr. Joseph Betancourt as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 4, 2016.
Docket 0380 through 0383 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities. Madam Clerk, report of public officers and others, please.
Number...
Yeah, could you please read docket 0384 through dockets 0409?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0384, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire, Executive Officer, appointment of Thomas V. J. Jackson to the fifth seat on the Boston Retirement Board for term expiring on January 15, 2018. Docket number 0385, communication was received from the Board of Election Commissioners regarding the special state primaries to be held on Tuesday, March 3, 2015, to file an existing vacancy in the General Court, First Suffolk District. Docket number 0386, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Meran Oriati as a member of the Boston School Committee for a term expiring January 4, 2016. Docket number 0387, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Councilor Michael Flaherty as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0388, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Councilor Tito Jackson as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0389, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Molly Maloney as a member of the Residency Policy Commission, excuse me. Docket number 0390, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Eileen Boyle as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0391, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Denise Williams-Harris as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0392, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Anise Vance as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0393, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Vivian Leonard as a member of the Residency Policy Commission. Docket number 0394, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Agnes Chang as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0395, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jennifer Evans as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0396, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Chayla White as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0397, notice was received by the mayor and from the mayor of the appointment of Jean Weber as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0398, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Gino Provenzano as a member of the Animal Control Commission, excuse me, for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0399, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Carrie Marie... Marsh as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0400, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Scott Wade as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0401, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Mary Ann Regan as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0402, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Alexandra Lopez-Cuandra as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0403, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kit Lilly as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0404, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ryan Hawkins as a member of the Animal Control Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2018. Docket number 0405, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Austin Blackman to serve as the ex officio member to the Boston Groundwater Trust. Docket number 0406, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 7, 2015. Docket number 0407, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of January 14, 2015. Docket number 0408, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of February 4, 2015. And docket number 0409, communication was received from Lawrence S. DeCara, KPMG LLP, regarding minutes from previous audit committee meetings.
Counsel Leanty, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I just rise to congratulate two of our colleagues who were appointed to the Residency Policy Commission by the mayor. Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Jackson are excellent choices to serve the other members of this body. Mr. President, as I pointed out previously during one of my interim reports to the Post-Doc and Oversight Committee, I pointed out that fully 38% of the city's payroll, based on base salaries before including overtime and benefits, 38% of the city's payroll are paid to great city employees who don't happen to live in the city of Boston. That translates into $426 million a year before benefits and before overtime. So I think it's very significant that this commission will be taking a look at residency and hopefully come up with a policy that encourages greater, not less, residency on the part of city employees. And hopefully, they can look at the issue of contracts as well as various other outflows of city dollars that literally go to individuals who don't pay property taxes within the city of Boston. So again, I just rise to commend the administration for appointing two of our colleagues and the other members to the Residency Policy Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Leanty. Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point of interest here, 0394 to 0404. I don't know if it needs to say animal care and control because the department was changed. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the body.
That's how the weather—
Okay.
Yes, I—
We'll bring that to the attention of the—
Of the city clerk.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, Counsel Baker. So dockets 0384 through docket 0409 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, reports of committees.
Docket number 0245, the Committee on Environment and Parks, to which was referred on February 4, 2015. Docket number 0245, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant totaling $80,465 from Urban Sustainability Directors Network to the city of Boston's Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to support the multi-city microgrid workshop to carry out a collaborative learning workshop for five-member cities of creating a more resilient grid, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counsel O'Malley on docket 0245.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0245 was sponsored by Mayor Martin Walsh on February 4, and the committee held a hearing last week, February 19. This is a grant of $80,465 from the Urban Sustainability Director Network to the city of Boston's Office of Energy, Environment, and Open Space. The purpose is to hold a multi-city microgrid workshop. Microgrids are localized energy grids that can disconnect from the traditional grid to operate autonomously and help mitigate grid disturbances to strengthen grid reliance. Grid modernization, specifically microgrids, came to the forefront of discussion after the events that took place several years ago in the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy. Making sure that our energy system is reliable is critical to disaster preparedness. In the event of an emergency or disaster situation in our city, residents need to know that they have a reliable energy grid system so that our hospital, transportation, and other critical emergency services are able to function. Great example of where the microgrids are currently working would be in the Longwood Medical Area. The money from this grant would go to fund a multi-city workshop where representatives from cities throughout the country can interact and exchange grids, ideas on grid modernization. Urge that we pass this without haste. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0245. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0245 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0244, message and order authorizing the city of Boston Transportation Department to accept and expend a grant from Massachusetts Department of Transportation, known as MASDOT, in an amount not to exceed $736,906.2 to assist the city in funding positions in the Boston Traffic Management Center, TMC, for the next fiscal year.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counsel McCarthy, on docket 0244.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a hearing yesterday with Jim Glouly from Boston Transportation Department. I fully explained the acceptance of this grant. Before positions total, three positions will be upstairs in the traffic center on the seventh floor. One position will be for field ops. After hearing the explanation of the job and the details, I would like to recommend that this ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0244. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0244 has passed. Madam Clerk, docket 0341, please.
Docket number 0341, on the message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $500,000 in a form of a lump sum agreement from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to fund the beautification and streetscape improvements to Mattapan Square.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Docket number 0341 for $500,000, a beautification project in Mattapan Square, which is my district. We're very happily ready to accept that. We will be having some community process on that. Most of this will be based, trees, some lighting, sidewalks, maybe some crosswalk reconstruction. But we're very much looking forward to spending the state's money. Thank you.[1152.58][1152.58](laughter)
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Leanty?
Thank you very much. We had a very productive hearing chaired by Counsel McCarthy. You did an excellent job. I, of course, support the acceptance of this $500,000. There's a lot of activity in Mattapan. Counsel McCarthy now represents the bulk of Mattapan, but I'm still honored to continue to share a respectable portion of Mattapan, which I've represented for more than 30 years. Mr. President, the administration did make a strong commitment to have a community process so that the community can weigh in on the design of these changes, very important changes with regards to streetscape and beautification of Mattapan Square. My request of the administration is that they also take a look at a study that this body approved through the loan order process, which was released more than five years ago called the MEDE project, the Mattapan Economic Development Initiative, prepared by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, so that whatever streetscape we come up with is pretty consistent with the vision articulated within that plan. So again, I thank the Chair and I'm urging passage.
Thank you, Counsel Leanty. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0341. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0341 has passed.
Docket number 0342, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of not more than $500,000 from Harvard University of Cambridge, Mass. This grant is awarded by the city of Boston through the Public Works Department to fund the city-led and city-managed Everett Street Improvements Project.
Chair recognizes the Chair on the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counsel McCarthy, on docket 0342.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The $500,000 from Harvard University has been—will go onto the Everett Street Improvements Project. This is a project that fellow Counsel Siomo has been working very diligently on, so I'd like to defer to him.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. And let me thank the Chair of the Committee for holding an outstanding hearing yesterday. And we're willing to spend Harvard's money to help the city improve Everett Street, which has been in the works for many years. It's going to upgrade from asphalt to concrete sidewalks, add lighting and trees to what connects our Lower Alston area to our Alston Village area. So I support passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0342. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0342 has passed.
Docket number 0373, the message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend funds totaling $475,000 from the Knight Foundation to the city of Boston's Department of Innovation and Technology, known as DO-IT, and the Boston Public Library, BPL, to join forces in making the city's data more accessible.
You've been quite busy, Counsel McCarthy. You have the floor on docket 0373.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Knight Foundation is based in Florida. They're giving the city of Boston a grant of $475,000. This is going to be a unique opportunity for DO-IT and the Boston Public Library to work together to make data access more transparent and easily accessible. I look forward to passing. Please.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0373. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0373 has passed.
Docket number 0339, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a capital grant contribution in the amount not to exceed $4379,436 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. This capital grant contribution is awarded to the city of Boston through the Public Works Department for the design and construction plans, specifications, and estimates, and for providing construction phase engineering services for the redesign of the Long Island Bridge crossing over Boston Harbor.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Siomo, on docket 0339.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Parajee Singh, the chief engineer for the city of Boston, testifying on this project, on this grant. Just to give a little context, this grant was originally entered into with the state before Long Island Bridge was condemned and no longer functional. And the grant was a matching grant so as to pay for half of the cost, a 50/50 share of the cost of demolishing and reconstructing the bridge piecemeal. What happened subsequently to that—it was in October—the bridge was closed down and a loan order from our capital loan orders back in FY14 of $39 million, of which this Long Island Bridge reconstruction, the $23 million that we are now using to demolish the bridge by Walsh Brothers Contractors. So docket 0339 is an order authorizing the city to expect, accept, and expand a capital grant contribution in the amount not to exceed $4379,346 from MASDOT. The purpose of this grant is to provide the reimbursement for 50% of the design of construction plans, specification, estimates, and for providing construction phase engineering services for the redesign of the Long Island Bridge. Let me just stop here. This does not commit the city to redesign and build the bridge. This was the original language from the grant before it was no longer functional. The partnership on the Long Island Bridge project was forged with DOT prior to the bridge closing. Initially, the intent was to design and demo and replace in sections a plan to rebuild the bridge while it was still open. The closure of the bridge rendered that plan unworkable, but state monies are still available to cover already expended demolition design work. And design work will still be needed to relocate three utilities that are currently abutting the bridge and will be relocated to the bed. And those utilities service both Long Island and Spectacle Island. At the hearing, we discussed the need for a broad and honest conversation about the cost and feasibility of rebuilding the bridge, as well as the need to examine other alternatives. But it's important to note that this grant is to recoup funds already expended on demolition design and to perform other necessary design work to relocate the utilities and manage environmental aspects of the phase of this project. So I recommend passing.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0339. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0339 has passed. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0178, order for hearing regarding excise tax collection procedures.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Siomo, on docket 0178.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing yesterday regarding the way the city handles its tax collection for excise on cars. And at this point, I'm going to defer to the maker of the order, Counselor McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy—thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We did have a lengthy hearing yesterday, and I believe we did make some progress. There still are some issues regarding communication and coordination between the RMV and our own office, so I respectfully request to keep it in committee.
Docket 0178 will remain in the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0250, on the message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Mr. Michael Woodall as the Chair of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, term expiring on January 4, 2016.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counsel McCarthy, on docket 0250.
Regarding the appointment of Michael Woodall, keep it short and sweet, his resume was impeccable. He had a phenomenal interview with them, and he answered all of our questions to its fullest. I seek that this ought to pass.
Madam Clerk, this is for confirmation?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and confirmation of docket 0250. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Docket 0250 has passed. Doubt the vote. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo? Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson? Counsel Jackson— Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson? Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina? Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley?
Counselor Presley, yes.
Counselor Wu?
Counselor Wu, yes.
Counselor Yancey?
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zakeham?
Counselor Zakeham, yes. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 0250.
Docket 0250 has been passed and the confirmation approved unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0344, message and order authorizing the city of Boston's Transportation Department to accept and expend $300,000 in the form of a grant from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, passed through the Public Health Commission as part of the CDC's partnership to improve community health program. The grant funds to be used over three years will be administered by the Boston Transportation Department for the purpose of supporting the city's bicycle program aimed at low-income residents.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Councilor Presley, on docket 0344.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, during our grant hearing, our bikes, our Director of Boston Bikes, Nicole Friedman, just underscored the fact that very often when we're talking about cycling in the city of Boston, people might define it as something that is majority-attractive to the affluent or hipsters. But given the growing density in our development in the city of Boston, and the cost of gas, and auto insurance, and limited parking, and also the fact that we have so many deficits in transit access points, we continue to struggle in terms of having equitable access to transportation, increasingly so, more and more low-income residents are cycling, both to commute to work, to navigate the city, for recreation, to be healthier. And in 2010, there was an exciting program that was spearheaded by the city of Boston called Roll It Forward, which acknowledges that many low-income residents do have bikes, but they are broken and disabled, and they don't have access to a repair shop with which to get those bikes back on the road. And so this grant will allow us to increase the capacity of this program to support low-income residents in cycling. It repairs their bikes. So there have been thousands of bikes since 2010 that have been repaired, and this grant will allow us to reach more residents to repair even more bikes. So I urge acceptance and passage.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0344. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0344 has passed. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number 0410, Counselor McCarthy and, Councilors McCarthy and Siomo offer the following, an order for hearing regarding snow operations and removal in the city of Boston.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Very much, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Siomo for jumping on board. As, you know, this has been a historic winter, and clearly, there's going to be some huge financial impacts, and that's why it's nice to have the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee on board. We've had eight feet of snow, 50 mile-an-hour winds, over and over again, it seems, traffic issues, and clearly, the men and women that we deal with every day in the Boston Public Works Department are exhausted and tired. What this hearing really is to focus on is the best practices. Best practices not only in our own city, not only in our state, not only in our country, but possibly the world. How does Montreal deal with it? How does Sweden deal with it? How does Finland deal with it? How do we reach out as a body and help Boston Public Works and the Basic City Services Team coordinate their efforts in the future? That's what this hearing is about. How do we talk, communicate better with the state, communicate better with the authorities, and communicate better within our own city agencies, such as the Boston Public Schools Department? So that's what this meeting, this hearing, is about, and I'd like to defer to Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
I'd like to thank Counselor McCarthy for his leadership and partnering with me on this order. As he said, I won't be redundant, but the public works crews and all the contractors who work for the city of Boston for basically the past four to five weeks have been working 24/7, either plowing, or removing snow, or patching roads, or picking up trash, and all the impacts that all these epic storms have brought to us. So all our resources have been stretched to the max. It's had a tremendous implication on this year's budget and how we forecast future budgets. I would think the city typically averages the previous five years' expenses to come up with the current-year budget. This year's $18.5 million. I think I've heard estimates around $60 million to date on this, on this winter's budget. So we need to maximize the resources, as Counsel McCarthy said. You know, do we need to buy all the equipment, or should the state have it? Should we be able to lease it when needed in areas? Because going out and buying all the state-of-the-art equipment, there's some of these snow blowers that just go right down the street, blow the snow right back in the truck, and they haul it away, and they just keep going. You know, how many can we afford to actually buy? But maybe if the state purchased them. So I think this is an opportunity to create a dialogue, and hopefully, this isn't the new normal for winters in our region. But certainly, we need to, you know, bring all the partners, our partners, together to, to make sure that we maximize resources and, and deal effectively with these storms and getting our city moving again. So I look forward to the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Siomo. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counsel McCarthy and Counsel Siomo, I asked to have my name added, and just point out that in 2009, one of our other colleagues, Counsel Flaherty, looks like a visionary with his, with his call for snow-melting machines in 2009. We sure could have used him in the last six weeks. So I just want to commend him for his visionary call in 2009, and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Please add Counselor Murphy's name. A lot of lights flashing. Counselor Lamatina?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to take this opportunity to commend Counselor McCarthy and Siomo. But I also want to take this opportunity to thank all, all the city of Boston employees who worked this past month on the snow operation through all our city of Boston. I feel like I've been working for Public Works for the last month myself. I want to thank Commissioner Denny and his crew, particularly District 9, Jim Grohlsmann, the guys in East Boston, Mike Sacco, John Shamo, Code Enforcement, Transportation Department, everybody, and the Social Elders, the volunteers who took the phone calls. We all work together. And I have this, you always hear me say, when all give, all gain. But I also want to take this opportunity to thank the folks in the neighborhoods that came out in East Boston to help with Operation Crosswalks. You know, there's a woman in child style, Lauren Connors, who was walking over the North Washington Street Bridge, and hasn't been shoveled for days. And she went out there herself, and she shoveled the bridge. And the business owners who hire plows to clean in front of their businesses. And so I think this hearing is a very good opportunity for all of us to sit down with Public Works, because we know our districts. You know, we know what needs to be done in our districts. So I think this is a good opportunity that, that we can sit down with Public Works, come up with our own plan for our district. I think that all of us know what has to be done in our districts. And I think that if we could sit down with Public Works, because I know that all of us here, we work in the snowstorm, heavy snowstorms, we're getting the phone calls, we're out in the streets, we're working. So we need to be part of that operation. So particularly, we get the blame. It's not us, but we still get the blame for it. But we need to really work with Public Works. I think it's a great opportunity for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank our council expert, Counsel McCarthy, on this issue. He spent a lot of time in trucks for many years, and I want to thank him for his, his work and also his expertise. I want to thank him for partnering with the person who holds the purse strings, which is, that was a very strategic move, to partner with the person who will be making recommendations about how we spend our money, which I think that was an ingenious move. We are, we are Boston. We're not in the Mid-Atlantic. We're not in the South. We are Boston. Just like banks are tested and prepared now for the worst conditions, that's what we should prepare for in the city of Boston. The part that I, and excuse me to the Chair of the Ways and Means, I think we should prepare for this to be the new normal. This has to, we have to think of it as the new normal so that we deal with the economic fallout that we're going to, what we're dealing with here. In Montreal, they spend $130 million a year on, on snow removal. But I think we have to put all of the numbers on the table. How much did businesses lose by not having their employees show up? How many businesses are in jeopardy of not actually being able to stay in business because they didn't make money this month? They weren't be able to be, to be open. So I think we do need to think about what type of equipment, and we know that the heads of departments generally are going to have to go and be part of the greater budget. We need to push, I think, as a council, and look at our capital expenditure in this space. You don't need to buy everything, but there's some things that those, the top dog, the, the snow blower thing, we need a bunch of those. So we can actually look at our main streets, main corridors in the city of Boston. I think that's something that we need to support the folks in Public Works on. I've been at the yards, and I, and I, although, you know, when you think about college, those folks who've done an overnight, overnighter, I did several of those. Could you imagine doing an overnighter and then having to drive a 20-ton truck and not hit cars the next day? That's what the folks in Public Works are dealing with. The other question that we need to explore is, we have 450 people who work in Public Works now, and in Blizzard 78, we have 1,200 people. I think there's something to be said about Boston residents who know how to get around the city of Boston without street signs, being the people behind these vehicles. So I think we need to really open the books up, and not think about what we've always done, but think about what we need to do in the city of Boston today, in a modern 2015 Boston, to ensure that our city, a northern city, a city that gets snow every single year, and gets these types of storms four times in a decade, that we're absolutely prepared. And so, looking at the number of staff, looking at the equipment that we need, and also the current equipment that we have. We've been skimping on this. And one other component, Boston Transportation Department doesn't have enough equipment to tow all the cars. We really need to do a real opening of our books and think about this. And why do we need to think about it? We're not only talking about snow, we're talking about the flagship city in the state of Massachusetts, and we're talking about the state economy here. And we are the driver of the state economy, and we should lead here. We are Boston, and we need to make sure that we can remove the snow in the city of Boston. Props to all of the people who've been working hard, but we have to do a retrospective. This is not about blame. This is actually about responsibility, and a responsibility that we have as a council to provide what needs to happen in the city of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President, and please add my name. And again, I thank the Office of this.
Please add Counselor Jackson's name, and Counselor Murphy's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor. Oh, I'm sorry. And Counselor Presley's name, Counselor Wu's name, Counselor Zakeham's. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to also commend our good colleagues from District 5 and District 9. Ask that my name be added. What I particularly appreciate about this hearing order is that it looks at snow removal through a couple of lenses, both obviously how it impacts citizens' everyday life with not only snow plowing, but school closures, trash and recycling pickup, and also looks at that financial aspect. I think, you know, we need to recalibrate our expectations going forward. We will, it looks like at least triple what our original budget was spent, and probably go beyond that. Thankfully, we have a rainy day fund. I think from henceforth, we should refer to it as the snowy day fund, because that's going to deal with a lot of these overrun costs. But would also ask that, as we do this, we both look at tried and true, successful ways to deal with the snow closures. Years ago, there would be a parking ban on even or odd sides of the street. That wouldn't necessarily work in every neighborhood. And one thing I think the administration has done well is adapted, different neighborhoods have different needs, have different layouts. Obviously, what's happening in South Boston seems to make sense. I don't know if that would necessarily every other neighborhood. But look at tried and, tried and tested true measures that have been successful going forward. There's also new technology, you know, apps like the Citizens Connect app, other initiatives the administration has put forward. Those are at work. Obviously, we read about a snafu with the Citizens Connect app after one of the first storms, but we want to address that. And then finally, I would just add that we also look, and when we have this hearing and whatever comes out of it, that we engage the different partners at all levels of government. Several years ago, I did a hearing purposefully in the fall, before the first flake fell, looking at ways that we can make sure that we know who has what in terms of jurisdiction. In my district, I know in many other districts, the state has a lot of roadways that are controlled, the MBTA has a number of properties. So really include them in the conversation, because I think there are many ways that they could do a better job. We could all do a better job. We all realize this is tough, this is difficult, some good things were done, but there's always room for improvement. So looking forward to engaging the different levels of government, as well as at the federal level. I know the mayor and the governor have been working to try to secure federal funding to help defray some of the costs. That's clearly something that we need to stay on top of and follow up. So delighted for this opportunity. Thank the two authors for their work, and look forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Flaherty?
Self-praise is no praise, so I'm not going to say I told you so.
But you did.
But I will take it, I will, I will, I will take advantage of the opportunity to, Counsel Murphy's point, that it was actually started in 2004, calling for snow melters and updated snow removal technology. And then it obviously got highlighted in the 2009 mayor's race. But it falls in the category of, I'd rather be looking at it than looking for it. We could have used it this year to help us. Previous administration and previous Public Works commissioners just couldn't get their hand around the value. We had an opportunity to buy and/or lease these machines for a fraction of the cost of what they are now. And had we maintained them, we would have been put them to, to use this year. But also, which I'd like to sort of explore with the hearing, is my office, I'm sure a lot of your offices, got calls from private vendors looking to see if the city would be willing to take their snow at the snow farms for a cost, or to melt that snow for the snow melters that we were using on a pilot basis, and to charge them. So we could have actually potentially made some money, or at least to, you know, to defray some of the costs that, that we incurred for our snow removal. So lots of missed opportunities, because there was a reluctance to embrace it. But we have an opportunity through this hearing to work with our new mayor and to work with the new Public Works Commissioner, to see whether or not it makes some sense, how we can get these in a cost-effective manner, where we can utilize them. And at the end of the day, it's important, we talked about the economic impact, to get the city up and running again, and whether that's getting our schools open, getting our business districts, our main streets, our libraries, you know, our tourist attractions. That's what really can be focused on, how do we get back up and running after a storm. And hopefully, Counsel Jackson didn't give us a weather jinx by encouraging more storms like this on an annual basis, but they happen. We're on the Northeast, shouldn't catch us by surprise. And having this machinery, having this equipment in our snow removal arsenal is a must. Should have happened 10, 11 years ago. Now's a chance to maybe play some catch-up, so that we won't be looking for it next time we have a major storm or repeat storms like we've experienced over the last couple of weeks. So please add my name, Mr. President, and look forward to the expedited hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name, Counsel O'Malley's name. Counsel Yancey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I too like to commend the two authors of this hearing order. Mr. President, this, as everyone knows, has been a catastrophic month, not only in terms of the amount of snow, but the fact that the city and much of the state was actually paralyzed. I don't recall seeing anything like this since 1978. And in 1978, I don't think we handled it as well as we did during this month. I recall seeing military vehicles in the streets of Boston in 1978 with the Red Cross signs on it, the Jeeps, the old-fashioned Jeeps riding around. The city was shut down. I was working with state government at the time, with Michael Dukakis was governor, and they did the best they could. and they did the best they could, but we learned a lot from 1978. We did not have vehicles stranded on Route 128 because people continued to attempt to navigate in the horrendous blizzard that we had. So we did better than we did in 78, but this, we actually had more snow this time than 1978. The implications are very severe in the sense that not only the added costs for snow removal, not on the expenditure side, but also on the revenue side. We've been very fortunate in recent years to generate surpluses in our mass meals taxes. My expectation unfortunately is that we're gonna find deficits in that particular revenue account as a result of what happened this month. I also believe that we should consider, how do we effectively guarantee handicap access during snowstorm? It's a next-to-impossible task, I know, but if those ramps are not cleared, then residents who depend on wheelchairs to get around will be basically imprisoned in their own homes. We must also thank and give relief to our employees of just about every city department, particularly of course, Public Works, Transportation, Police, Fire, we've had firefighters out there clearing hydrants, in addition to the great work on the part of our residents who accepted responsibility to clear residence. Finally, Mr. President, I would ask that we take a look at what federal assistance we can receive. I have no doubt that this was a real disaster, not only in terms of the cost to municipal government, but the cost to the homeowners and residents who saw ice dams two and three feet thick. I mean, I'm just a witness to that, and I'm sure virtually every neighborhood of Boston suffers from the impact of ice dams on their roofs. So I am looking forward to the hearing, of course, I ask that my name be added, and that we also invite representatives of the handicap and disabled to ensure that their voices are heard, and perhaps they can even have some ideas on how we can make sure that the city is accessible to everyone. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to have my name added.
Thank you, Counsel Leansy, and please add Counselor Leansy's name. Does anybody want their name added that it didn't get recognized? Okay. I'd just like to close this by thanking Counselor McCarthy and Counselor Siomo for putting this forward, I think it's gonna be a very important discussion, one that we can recognize the amount of work, the enormous amount of work that was done by people who worked for the city of Boston. I mean, we talk about the snow and how much it took to move it, and then remove it, and then safety matters all around it, but I talked to the mayor's office today, they received 100,000 calls over that time. So there was a lot of work done by people that were inside, and then transferring it and, the communication was amazing, when you think about it, the communication, both within the state and municipal level, was just extraordinary. As leadership, we have to congratulate both our governor and our mayor for what they've done, and I think Charles Leansy hit it right on the head, this catastrophic event, you don't get that sort of description when it happens over four weeks, but it's the truth. So thank you to all out there, I look forward to the hearing, and this docket 0410 is assigned to the Committee on City, Neighborhood Services, Veterans Affairs, and joint with Ways and And please add my name. Docket 0411.
Docket number 0411, Counselor Jackson offered the following order for a hearing regarding opportunities for youth summer jobs.
Our Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson on docket 0411.
That this is 0411, that's actually my birthday, I wear double XL, Mr. President, just in case you were thinking about it.
I already have it wrapped.
Okay. So Counselor Arroyo actually annually did a hearing around youth jobs. I think it's significant that we keep that tradition going. Our young people are one of our most valuable assets in the city of Boston. If we're really looking at dealing with issues around violence prevention, and what happens in the summer, knowing that we were at 52 murders and at a four-year high last year, we definitely need to think about and prepare for what this summer looks like. We know that generally, we get 10,000 young people jobs, but there's about 4,000 young people who don't get a job every summer. We actually have, actually, you yourself, Mr. President, and many others in this room have worked intimately with this program, and you know also that the data shows, the younger a young person gets a job, the less often over the course of their lifetime they are actually unemployed. We wanna make sure that we invest in our young people, we wanna make sure that in preparation for the budget, that we prepare a place for them and have that opportunity. The other aspect of this is, we wanna make sure that colleges, universities, as well as the business community steps up and does their part in employing young people in the city of Boston. So I look forward to an expedited hearing on this. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanna thank Counselor Jackson for writing this. This is near and dear to my heart, I was the director of the Boston Youth Fund for 10 years, nine full summers, and many of my colleagues now, I remember there were calls made to me regarding the Hope Line and getting kids jobs and all this stuff, and it was very, very rewarding. I wanna thank Counselor Jackson, you know, this is that important. The key is with summer jobs, and I've said it since 1996, when I took the job, is quality, quality jobs. Hiding kids in the woods and paying them $8 an hour doesn't teach anybody anything. So we, as a council, and we as a city, we really do need to approach the business community as well as our nonprofits and expand the programs there. I look forward to, for the hearing, and please sign me on.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna jump in in the same vein as Counselor Flaherty and say self-praise is no praise at all, but when Counselor Arroyo was in knickers, I was sponsoring these types of orders here on the city council, and I even took a step further. I worked with Maria Dominguez Gray and Bison and its predecessors, and took the youths up to Beacon Hill and lobbied both the House and Senate Ways and Means memberships for increases in state funding, which we got out of a compromise up there, and the Senate number, the year that we were, was up there, was added another $1 million to the state appropriation. And then we went outside on the steps, and I had members of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, members of the House Ways and Means Committee, and one of my colleagues from the city council, who Counselor Jackson took his place, came up and attacked the state on the steps of the State House. So it worked out really well. But I just wanna mention that this thing goes on and on every year, and all of us work together to try to get the most that we can for the youth of Boston and the youth of our surrounding cities and towns, get them busy and keep them out of harm's way in the summers. Thank you. I'd like to add my name to.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Please add Counselor McCarthy's name and Counselor Murphy's name, Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Wu's name, Counselor Saikum, add my name, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty, and Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Presley.
Just, you know, eloquent words by my colleagues here, and especially appreciate the emphasis on the need for the private sector to step up. You know, we keep talking about a skills gap in our Commonwealth and how many jobs are going unfilled. Private sector, this is where that workforce development begins. You know, there are many ways in which you benefit by doing business in the city of Boston, and we're proud that you wanna do business here, but we need your increased partnership in creating summer job opportunities for the young people in the city of Boston. This is not only about prevention and thinking about public safety, it is also about life skills, soft skills, workforce development, and much-needed income in these households. And so the last thing I wanna say about this, and it's been difficult to have a bigger conversation about this, and I tell our youth advocates, who I admire and appreciate very much their grassroots mobilizing and their vigilance in advocating for youth jobs to be more than level-funded, because the demand is so great. But the reason why the demand is so great, in my estimation, is because too many of our adults are underemployed. The best gift you can give a child is a stable adult, and because adults are unemployed or underemployed, they are in those jobs that used to go to our youth, in retail, in the hospitality industry. So again, I, you know, I commend the mayor, I think all of our colleagues, you know, I'm preaching to the choir, we all know how important this is, but private sector, we need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Would you like to have your name added?
Oh, yes.
Please add Counselor Presley's name. Counsel Leansy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm not gonna talk about the efforts we made back in 1984 and 85 to get our local business people to hire our young people, but what, thank you. That predates some of these other programs. However, on a serious note, Mr. President, of course, I'd like to have my name added, I commend Counselor Jackson for offering it. Would like us to expand the conversation, however, to also consider the year-round jobs that we are now providing for our young people, and even broach the topic of wanted jobs for our youth. I know that many of my neighbors are senior citizens, I guess I'm one myself, and we could use young people participating in the shoveling effort. Perhaps the city can come up with a creative program to assist particularly our senior citizens as they endeavor to comply with the law and ensure that the sidewalks are shoveled. So I would like to, again, have my name added, hopefully at this hearing, expand the topic to include the citywide jobs we have for youth. And again, I also like to commend the work of Tim McCarthy, when he headed up that effort, he came to these chambers many, many times to defend his budget and to describe his program, and he won the support of virtually every member of the city council whenever he came. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Leansy. Please add Counselor Leansy's name. And could docket 0411 be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor? Yeah, please read docket 0412 through 0418.
Docket number 0412, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F, list of active employees as of June 30th, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between April 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2014. Docket number 0413, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting information under Section 17F, a list of active employees as of March 31st, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations, I'm sorry, by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between January 1st, 2014 and March 31st, 2014. Docket number 0414, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting information under Section 17F regarding lists of all boards, commissions, and authorities of the city of Boston by name, date established, enabling legislation, name, title, gender, and term, which is available on the city's clerk's website. Docket number 0415, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding lists of all non-bid contracts for FY 2013 and year-to-date 2014 by name, of contractor, gender, department, address, amount, and race. Docket number 0416, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding viola transportation concerns, the events of October 8th, 2013. Docket number 0417, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding lists of active employees as of December 31st, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, and terminations by the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between October 31st, 2014 to December 31st, 2014. And docket number 0418, Counsel Leansy offered the following order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding lists of all active employees as of September 30th, 2014, with the name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, and race, and residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions, terminations by name, title, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, and residency between July 30th, 2014 to September 30th, 2014.
Chair recognizes Counsel Leansy on dockets 0412 through 0418.
The Post-Offsite Committee's work is basically done with the exception of information to be gleaned from these 17F orders, but I would point out, Mr. President, that there are two typographical errors, one in 0417, that should read October 1st, not 31st, 2014 to December 31st, 2014, and docket number 0418 should read July 1st, 2014 to July, um, to September 30th, 2014. The information is accurate in the document. Mr. President, for my entire tenure on the Boston City Council, we have received this information routinely. Last year, we did not, we had a brand-new administration, and we worked cooperatively with the administration, that's doing a great job addressing a lot of the issues of diversity. So I fully expect that the administration will comply with the 17F orders, they were not able to do so last year for various reasons. Even the Boston Globe, Mr. President, has received more information than we have concerning some of the personnel issues raised here, so I'm requesting, of course, suspension and passage on each of these items to encourage the administration to comply within the law. I believe that's within seven days. I know this information is readily available. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Leansy. I will, although we read them in the egg, we get out, we read them individually, so Counselor, Counsel Leansy moves suspension and passage of docket 0412. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0412 has passed. Counsel Leansy moves suspension and passage of docket 0413. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0413 has passed. Counsel Leansy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0414. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0414 has passed. Counsel Leansy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0415. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0415 has passed. Counsel Leansy moves suspension of the rules in docket 0416. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0416 has passed. And Counsel Leansy moves suspension and passage of docket 0417. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0417 has passed. Counsel Leansy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0418. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0418 has passed. Counsel Siomo.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the call?
Docket number 0419, Counselors Linderhand and Baker offer the following order approving a petition for a special law regarding, an act regarding attacks on certain alcoholic beverages.
Chair recognizes Counsel Linderhand.
This particular matter is somewhat of a refile from last year that Counselor Baker and I had developed. We had a hearing on just off-premise, and the
We had a hearing on just off-premise, and the idea was to reconstitute the 6.5% tax that was dedicated toward certain substance abuse services that was taken away by referendum across the state. But when we had the, when we had the particular hearing, we talked with the retail package store owners, because it was for just-off-premise consumption of alcohol, and they said that we're being targeted specifically on the matter, and that there's a whole host of ways in which alcohol is used and people purchase. So in that, we decided that we take a more comprehensive approach. We could minimize the amount of percentage that would be affected in a tax, and we could share the burden on both off-premise and on-premise consumption. So that would mean that there would be a tax both at the package store and both as having a drink in a bar, pub, or restaurant. And this specific tax would go directly to provide substance abuse services, resources around addiction services here in the city of Boston. So in doing that, we thought that it would be one, between 1 and 2%, and it, as we've estimated, 1% is approximately $10 million annually. So the idea is that we would have a hearing on this matter. I'm sure that we will hear from the folks who serve alcohol. But we've also, you know, we'll hear from the people who consume alcohol, of which I'm one. And I can't even say how long I've been doing it. If we just had that 1%, no, I won't go there. So we're gonna, we want a hearing to know what it means to the consumer. And we believe that they will respond. The businesses will come in and tell us how it impacts their business, and we want to hear that. But when you think about the impacts of a recovery, one recovery, and how many do not, people who don't get the opportunity to recover, or don't go to a counseling during intervention, or don't get to a prevention program because of this, it has enormous impact. So just alcohol, 52% of 10th graders across America have consumed alcohol, 68% of 12th grade, 78% of college students. Alcohol kills six and a half times more teenagers than any other illicit drug combined. And alcohol contributes to 100,000 deaths annually. It's part of our society, and we know and we understand that. But for me personally, a consumer to take a small portion of that and pay it in a tax and have it directed specifically to those people who are affected, there are people, if there's enough people in a room, they all consume alcohol, one of them will be an alcoholic, and they will have to deal with the ramifications. And we, as a populist, we deal with the ramifications. I mean, even seniors, Charles and I, 50% of nursing home residents have alcohol-related problems. In the professional area, absenteeism among alcoholics and problem drinkers is 3.8 to 8.3 times greater than normal. Non-alcoholic members of families and we've, who don't drink, still take, use up their sick time 10 times more than other people. So this thing, it affects the health and well and healthcare system. So whatever we can do, and this is just in the alcohol range, we know the exorbitant impacts today around illicit drug use and the inappropriate use of prescription drugs. We add that all to the problem, to have an extra $10 million to affect that, dollar for dollar and penny for penny in the consumption will have enormous impact on the well-being of our community. So we know that it's touching, and we know that it has impact, but we think that this is a reasonable approach to find dedicated funds for a serious problem that is not only an epidemic here in Boston, and one that we try very hard to address, but also one throughout the state. And having been working with folks in the addiction services business, more than 50% of all the people we serve in this city do not come from this city. So here's a particular consumption that doesn't occur with just people who live here. It comes from people who come to visit and people who come to, for hospitality. So we think that it's an applicable application for something that is truly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilor Baker.
Councilor Linehan for filing this, let me be part of this. Do I want to have a tax on people? No, I don't. But we finally have a governor and a mayor who I think are willing to step up and have the hard conversations. And when we start to get policies in place, the next question's going to be, where does the money come from? And we're going to have to have some sort of discussion on how the tax happens. I believe it should happen at a state level, because most of the, not most of, a good amount of people that we serve in Boston come from surrounding communities. Two weeks ago, in my memorial, I had a young kid, Bobby Prey, in my memorial. He was a kid that I mentored when I was volunteering at the neighborhood house that I volunteered at. 28-years-old daughter-at-home died of heroin addiction. I talked to a friend of mine this morning who used to volunteer at the St. Francis House. In 2002, the feds came in and mandated that the St. Francis House, and this is just one house in Boston, mandated that they have beds set aside for drug replacement therapy beds. Drug replacement therapy is Suboxone, could be Methadone, any of those, any of those, I call them crutch drugs. You say, what does that have to do with it? I think as a society, in a state level and the federal level, we're not handling it right. The overdose rate in 2002 went from 5% per 100,000 in Massachusetts to, and these numbers may vary a little bit, to, in 2012, 11%. So 11 people per 100,000 are dying now, since we, since the feds changed their policy to open the doors up for this drug replacement therapy. We, as opinion, people that can form opinions and make people listen to us, we have to look at things like Bain Capital getting into the, getting into the methadone clinic business. It's big business, and we have to have real conversations about it now. Do I want to hurt small restaurants or small liquor stores? No, I don't. But if this happens, if my name is on something that starts a conversation, and we can look back, and we've done something, then I'm prepared to take those tough emails or those tough phone calls for a 1%. If someone sits down at Ruth Chris and buys a $100 bottle, 1% of that is $1. So I'll pay that $1. I can't buy the $100 bottle of wine, but I'll be more of a $15, $18 bottle of wine. So mine'll be 18 cents. Cheap wine. But thank you, and a tough decision, but I'm prepared to stand by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Chair recognizes Councilor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm conflicted on this one. I think we should proceed with caution on this, simply because, interestingly, we are bringing up a lot of policy that affects specifically the hospitality industry, which, if we look at the hospitality industry in the city of Boston, and actually, in particular, if you look at it this month, they're hurting. And so we just really need to think about proceeding with caution. What I like about this is I actually like taxes that are actually dedicated and go to a specific purpose. I actually, I want to thank the framers of this legislation based on that. I don't think anyone wants to pay more for less, which is most often what we have on offer relative to taxes. But I would say with additional liquor licenses on the market, with policies on offer around BYOB, we need to really think about an industry in our, in our city that employs a lot of people, but has a lot of stress on it currently in terms of snow and all of the things that are, that it's facing. So I just think we should be thoughtful, proceed with caution, and make sure that we don't have things that don't make people, that make people stay home and not go out and have fun and have meals. And so I think we, again, proceed with caution and be very thoughtful about this. The flip side of this is that we spend over $500 million in methadone treatment in the state of Massachusetts currently. And Councilor Baker represents a part of the, well, a part of his district that I used to represent. We have several thousand people in the Newmarket area who are coming, and as Councilor Linehan noted, actually, we were there together. There was an intervention that the police did there. They arrested 60 people, and 58 people were from outside the city of Boston. Right? So we are feeling much of this issue around addiction. We have to figure it out, but I think we need to think about all aspects, and not only to put it on one industry that also has meals and option taxes on it. Let's proceed with caution, be very thoughtful, be very deliberate in our path forward. Thank you very much. And I'd like to, I would like to add my name.
Please add the name of Councilor Jackson. And docket 0419 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Chair, docket 0420.
Docket 0420, Councilor Presley and Baker offer the following resolution in support of the Boston Housing Authority's designated housing plan to increase the percentage of public housing units dedicated to seniors.
Okay, what matter was that, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, I was in transition.
0420.
Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my dear friend and my district city council, Councilor Baker, for partnering with me on this resolution as chair of our housing committee. What I'm bringing before the body today is a resolution in support of the BHA's proposal to increase the percentage of housing units dedicated to seniors. Because it seems like today is sort of our policy deja vu day. This is not a new issue before our body. Councilor Murphy has had great leadership in this space, and all of us, as we traverse the city, have heard this in countless neighborhood and civic group meetings, how critical it is that we address these mixed populations within BHA and the impact that it is having in terms of quality of life. The BHA-proposed designation plan will allocate 80% of housing for seniors over the age of 62 and 20% of housing for non-elderly disabled. So our current plan designates 70% for seniors and 30% for the non-elderly disabled. So this would be going from a 70-30 model to a 80-20 model. This new housing allocation will bring Boston up to speed with other cities and towns in the Commonwealth and across the nation who actually have the 80% or higher HUD-approved designation for seniors. Now, it's important to note, the BHA has made hundreds of vouchers available for our non-elderly disabled so that this population also has access to the housing they need. Now, the BHA has already submitted their proposal to HUD, so I respectfully request that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution today so that it can be forwarded to HUD immediately. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to commend Councilor Presley and Councilor Baker. Have my name added, and I support suspension and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Councilor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Councilor Presley for inviting me in on this. This is, I have to applaud the Housing Authority for taking this on, complaints constantly from seniors living in buildings that feel unsafe in their buildings. Again, back to the feds. The feds have changed the, what it is to be disabled. So now we have addicts living in with elderly people, our most, our most, you know, our most vulnerable population. And I'd like to see, you know, maybe in a year or two, we might go to 90-10. I'd like to see that. And eventually, 100% elderly. I think, I think our parents and grandparents and older aunts and uncles deserve to live in safety. Thank you. And that's not a slight on the disabled community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Councilor Siomo, just add your name. Councilor Jackson's name, Councilor Amatina, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Yancey, Councilor Zakeham. Please add my name. Councilor Flaherty.
And senior housing should be for seniors only. We've been talking about this for a long time. Ideally, we'd love to have 100% senior only, so step in the right direction. So please add my name and look forward to, it's going to probably be more of an adoption today than a hearing, but having the BHA come in or having the authorities that are trying to make some sense why we have drug addicts and gang members and those that are involved in all kinds of criminal activity, living among and disrupting the quality of life for our seniors and our most vulnerable residents. And the only exception that should be made for a nonsenior is when you have an adult special need child that can live independently but has been living with the mother or father, and that mom and dad dies, and that community rallies around that adult special needs child. And so now, that child now inherits, who's now an adult, but now inherits, you know, 25 mothers and 25 fathers in a particular development. So rise again to support my colleagues and think that we got to continue to push the envelope here to get to 100%, where we have a good quality of life that conducive for seniors to live out their golden years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Presley, your light is flashing. Did you want to? He did, but I think it was to sign on.
Yes.
Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank all of you for your support. And I did, just picking up on what Councilor Baker was saying, I wanted to just make it clear to those that are watching at home that we in no way want to show a lack of understanding for the need to support not only our disabled, but also those that are battling addiction. You know, all of us have loved ones in our family who are living with disability or who could be in recovery. We're simply just challenging the notion in this model that these populations cannot coexist. It isn't fair to anyone. Councilor Jackson and myself and Councilor Wu were in a meeting recently where we met a 78-year-old great-grandmother who talked about putting a towel under her door to stop the crack smoke from coming into her apartment. You know, that is just not okay. We cannot have 72-year-olds living next door to 22-year-olds that are battling addiction. So we're not in any way trying to vilify those populations, just questioning and addressing the real threat to quality of life and security and peace of mind in having all these populations coexist. And as I said, the BHA has created a voucher to address that population as well and to ensure that they're going to be housed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor, my, Councilor Jackson, did you have your?
I just wanted to note, as Councilor Presley noted, it's about appropriate supports for these specific populations. And as noted, we were at an event recently where an elder brought up that there was prostitution going on actually in their building. Right? So we have a senior who we made a commitment to take care of them, and these types of activities are going on in the building. And I would note, in Brighton a couple of years ago, and Councilor Murphy and others led the charge on this, this was fatal. Someone passed away based on this mix of folks who need extra support with their medication and seniors. And I actually ended up, I knew this gentleman, he worked at the barber shop that I go to. So this is something that is not simply a policy issue, but ended up in this, sadly in this situation, Councilor Siomo knows better than myself, in a situation where it was fatal to one of our seniors. So it's something that is urgent, and I look forward to passing this today and hope that our friends at the state will move quickly on this.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Flaherty?
Just a final word, Mr. President, in concurring with the lead sponsor, there also needs to be an expedited eviction process through the BHA whereby young individuals who are living with seniors who are engaged in prostitution, drug activity, and violence get evicted. You know, it's abusing their privilege, they're fortunate to be living and having subsidized units and to be embraced by a community, and when they violate that trust and they disturb and disrupt other people's quality of life, the BHA has to do a better job of communicating with the local district courts, reading those 1-1s that are in all of our different districts and police reports to identify the addresses of those that are involved in this activity and to move immediately for eviction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Presley and Councilor Baker move suspension and adoption of docket 0420. I don't vote, Madam Clerk. I don't vote, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo? Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty? Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson? Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina? Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan?
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy? Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy? Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley? Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley? Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu? Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancy? Counsel Yancy, yes. Counsel Zakim? Counsel Zakim, yes. We have a unanimous vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0420 has been adopted unanimously.
Docket number 0421, Counselors Murphy and Flaherty offer the following order for a hearing to discuss additional 911 data for faster, more effective response.
Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my vice chair of Public Safety, Counsel Michael Flaherty, for joining me on this. This is our second attempt to engage up-to-date technology in improving 9/11 response time, lowering response time, and thereby saving lives. According to our own FCC, 75% of all 911 calls are wireless-only in the city of Boston, and minimal information about that caller is transferred during that transaction. The city of Boston just recently has taken control over 911 calls from wireless cells. Used to route out to Framingham, to the state police, and then come back to Boston, eating up countless seconds of response time. Counsel Flaherty had brought forward a technology a few weeks ago called Top Sync, which we had a hearing on here about 10 days or two weeks ago, and it was an enlightening hearing. It was members of the city council, but it was a presentation put on by the Boston Police Department and the Boston School Police Department to run it up the flagpole to the decision-makers who make the decisions for the city on technologies such as these. Smart 911 is another of those technologies. It shares additional information from the caller to the response authority. If it's a multi-unit building, you might get the number of the unit is being called in from. The medical conditions of the residents, the callers, are transferred at the time of call, whether there are pets on a premise. All of these things are additional information which could be used in a way to reduce a response time and ultimately save lives. I want to commend Counsel Flaherty for his efforts in this tandem and look forward to a speedy hearing and adoption of some of these new platforms by the Boston Police and Boston EMS and Boston Fire and School Police to assist in reducing 911 response times here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President, and like to commend the lead sponsor for including me. And it was through that hearing and through Counsel Murphy's inquiry that we highlighted some flaws in the current 911 system here in the city. So the smart 911 technology will go a long way, as Counsel Murphy said, will create a smart profile for responding offices with the goal of two things. One, clearly, reducing response times, which is to the benefit of those that need help the most. But also, something that's happening locally and nationally is those that have mental health issues or particularly those that suffer from autism, and having that be included in the profile as responding offices or the fire department or EMS are responding to a situation and dealing with someone that has autism or a mental health issue clearly makes a difference in how that first responder will be dealing with that situation as well. So it's multifaceted. It's new technology out there that will enhance our ability to service our residents and to respond more quickly and more appropriately to situations that are unfolding with those safety profiles. So I look forward to the hearing and thank the lead sponsor for his including me in this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Yancy?
I just want to have my name added and commend the makers.
All right. Please add Counsel Yancy's name. Counsel Zakim. Counsel Presley. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Siomo. Add my name. Thank you. So docket 0421 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. I'm informed by the clerk that there are six late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
Counsel Bill Linehan for Counsel Jackson, order that effective Saturday, February 21st, 2015, the following named person.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
I didn't know what order you were.
You read it? We'll start over. Yeah, thank you.
President. Counsel Bill Linehan for Counsel Jackson, offer that effective Saturday...
Counsel Jackson, request suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. It's personnel in nature. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the first late-file matter is passed.
On February 24th, 2015, dear Madam Clerk, please be advised that the Boston City Council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March 4th, 2015, with a start time of 12:00 p.m., will now have a start time of 2:00 p.m. in order for the Boston City Council to attend the Boston Research Bureau's 83rd Annual Meeting.
Madam Clerk, second late-file matter will be placed on file.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offered by Counsel Bill Linehan, an order for hearing regarding the 2024 Summer Olympics, whereas Boston 2024 is organization assembled to back the effort to bring the 2024 Olympics to the city of Boston. Now therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to hear a presentation of the 2024 Summer Olympics to initiate the discussion and give the Boston City Council an opportunity to vet concerns. And be further ordered that the representatives from Boston 2024 and other interested parties shall be invited to attend.
Please place the third late-file matter in the Special Committee on Olympics 2024.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket, I'm sorry, offered by Counsel Jackson, order for hearing to discuss the effects of the 2015 snowstorms on Boston businesses. Whereas the winter snowstorms and blizzards made significant impact on businesses in Boston, and therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee in the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the effects of the 2015 snowstorms on Boston's business, and that representatives from the business community, the Small Business Association, the Department of Neighborhood Development, and other interested parties be invited to attend and testify.
Counsel Jackson on the fourth late-file matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I were in school, I would ask the teacher, I would actually say sorry for my tardiness in passing in my homework. This one, I think, is appropriate, though, because the SBA possibly has dollars to help our businesses in the city of Boston. As noted before, this is a disaster. And speaking to businesses in my district and also some across the city, it is critical that we support them. We need to do an examination of what their needs are, and then from there, figure out what we do as a city, state, and also at the federal level to make sure that we support these businesses. Many of these businesses, 85% of businesses in the state of Massachusetts are 50 people or less. Many of them are small, and in light of what has happened, we definitely need to make sure that we're supporting them. And so I would like to have a hearing on this. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. The fourth late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Economic Development and Labor, Planning and Labor.
Offered by Counselors Jackson and Counsel McCarthy, order for hearing regarding the use of mobile applications for public work services. Whereas the city of Boston has made significant efforts, excuse me, efforts to update residents and neighborhoods regarding public work services, therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the exploration and adoption of mobile application strategies to address and enhance the public work services across the city. Be it further ordered that representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Office of New Urban Mechanics, other appropriate city departments and offices, and interested parties be invited to attend and testify.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor on the fifth late-file matter.
Mr. President, we actually recently got an app, thankfully, to be able to pay for our parking with a mobile device. That's a great thing. Many cities are doing that across the country. Interestingly, and as Counsel McCarthy and I discussed, and as many folks who've been to the public works yard actually know, that the way that we distribute our contractors in the city of Boston, and we put them out into the community in a blizzard, is actually, ironically, the same way when we're in campaign time, we actually have workers who go knock on doors. We give them a piece of paper with their 20-ton vehicle, and we ask them, many, most of them who are not from the city of Boston, to drive down the street with a large truck and look at a piece of paper and figure out where to plow. That, to me, doesn't seem like in a place where we have all of these colleges and universities, all of this technology, the best thing to do. And so I, as well as Counsel McCarthy, we thought about having some type of app that allowed for kind of like a GPS or a Garmin system that's out there, so you could actually load in the driving, the driving route for the folks who are most of the time not from the city of Boston. It could be something that they download on a smartphone that has verbal prompts, and actually would be much safer. In addition, the other cool thing that we could actually do is that as public works tickets are generated from Citizens Connect, you could actually find, and I don't want to use the "you" word next to my friend Sal Lamatina, but you could actually find a truck that was close to where that ticket was generated, and maybe that truck could actually deal with the issue that's there. We could expedite this, actually, we could actually do this as part of the mayor's hack program, not the typical use of the word "hack," but it's something that, as a city of Boston, as a technologically advanced city, that we should actually be doing, and we should not have people using pieces of paper to distribute contractors. And I would also just note, many of these folks are making $200 to $300 an hour on our dime. So it actually would be a more efficient way of distributing our assets that are out there.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counsel Jackson, for allowing me to partner with you. This is, once again, a lot like we talked about in docket number 0410, bettering, offering tools to help, as Counsel Jackson alluded to. You know, being in the district yard at 2:00 in the morning, you're handing people pieces of paper, and we all know our district. So when I say to a plow driver, hey, Oak Street up by MPB needs to be hit, he looks at me and says, "MP what?" He doesn't know the neighborhood, he doesn't know the area. FedEx, UPS, they use technology like this where they can take consecutive right turns, would save a ton of time. This is an interesting concept, and it'd be a great tool for public works to use, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley? Okay. Please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Counsel Siomo's name. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Yancy. Counsel Zakim's name. Please add my name. Oh, and add Counsel Presley's name. That particular matter would be placed in the Committee on Neighborhood Services and
Offered by Counsel Jackson, order for hearing to review the current MBTA infrastructure and needs for future investment. Whereas Massachusetts State Transportation Authority, known as the MBTA, services over 1.2 million riders per weekday and is critical connector between passengers, businesses, employers, and other economic activities in Boston and the surrounding areas. Therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council order a hearing to review the current MBTA infrastructure and needs for future investment that representatives from the MBTA, the Boston Transportation Department, and other appropriate city of Boston departments and agencies and other interested in parties be invited and attend to testify.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
The T is broken. It hasn't been invested in. And in this most difficult of storms, instead of being the model that we should have in terms of urban mass transit, we really have a Model T that is an antiquated system that literally could not hold up against the storm, literally. And so the objective here is to look at the future of this, and many people would say this is a state issue. It affects the people of the city of Boston, people who literally were stranded based on the T having DC motors rather than AC motors. And, you know, ironically, the orange line that we have now is still, is the same old orange line that we had when we had the L. And so I think it's absolutely critical that this body work with the Mass Bay Transit Authority to figure this out. And we are a critical part. 1.4 million people use that system on a daily basis, and many folks who are from the areas of our city that actually have the least absolutely depend on that. And then there are many other folks who just simply depend on it to get to work. I would also note, many people have jobs that if you don't go, you don't get paid. You literally will not get paid if you don't go. And so we have people this month, it's almost the end of the month, who are going to be questioning whether or not they can literally make ends meet because they didn't work. We can't have that. That can't, that doesn't work for our present, and it definitely doesn't work for our future. So we have to get our arms around that. And I just wanted to put that, put this forward and really expedite this because it's a critical, critical issue for most of the folks in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Murphy?
I want to thank Counsel Jackson for offering this. I just have some historical perspective. 27 years since 1988, the MBTA has been underfunded by both Democratic and Republican administrations at the State House. And they did so to try to, to try to boost the bond rating of the Commonwealth at a time when we were getting 75% or 80% reimbursement on the Big Dig project, which came out of Speaker O'Neill in the Ronald Reagan years in DC. And so all of this neglect, cumulative neglect, has shown itself in the last month here because, in fact, as my predecessor, previous speaker said, the T is broken. The problem with holding a hearing like this for someone who's been around a while is the Boston City Council then becomes the owners of the MBTA's failures in the mind of the people that we invite here. They rail against government, and they're railing against the wrong government when they rail against us in this hearing process. We're trying to open the doors to the historical underfunding, but we were not responding but we were not responsible for that underfunding. And that's the only thing, you know, if you build it, they will come. They're going to come. And they're going to come here in an election year for this body, and they're going to be upset because of the failure of a transportation system that we don't fund, we don't maintain, and we don't control. And that's my only point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Presley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just echoing some of what Counselor Murphy was expressing, Senate President Stan Rosenberg recently acknowledged that, in the past, the legislature's focus really has been on reform and not revenue. And clearly, that needs to change. I would also just beg the larger question when we were discussing the new normal. That new normal is certainly being formidable influenced by the impacts of global warming and climate change. And so when we are talking about what we're going to do to, in public works, we're talking about equipment or what we're going to do in terms of infrastructure, that this is not just about equipment, and this is not just about resources, but let's just make sure that we are talking about what our resiliency plan is and that we are being mindful of the implications of what is happening all around us and how that does impact our planning when it comes to infrastructure and other things that have already been discussed today. And I wish to have my name added. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Please add Counselor Presley's name. Counselor Lamatina's name. Counselor Yancy's name. That's it for late files. Right? Do we have any more? I need to assign this, right? Yeah. So the order for a hearing to review the MBTA infrastructure will go to the Special Committee on Transportation and Public Infrastructure. Anybody wishing to pull anything from the green sheets? You don't? There are 19 late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections. Matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. When Counselor Jackson reminded me that 4/11 was his birthday, it reminded me that my youngest grandchild, my granddaughter Juliet's birthday is today. So I'm just, happy birthday, Juliet. At this time, I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individual. For Counselor Ciomo. Sarah D. Cisco? Oh, Chico. For Sarah DeChico. To Geralda Leone. To Margaret M. Rich. To Raymond W. Sleeper. Counselor Lamatina. Kenneth English. Natalie Harris. Ronald A. Hottaway. Jerry Tordeglioni. Fred White. For the chair and Counselor Flaherty, Lamby L. Adams. Eileen M. Dwyer. Matthew Matt King. Mary E. O'Hare. Monica Sullivan. For Counselor O'Malley, Robert Wells Norton, which is Matt's uncle. For Counselor Yancy, Willie May Kerthet. Dorothy Boyd. Morgan S. Dowden. And William P. Hill. And I just want to recognize the councilor's amazing support throughout the passing of my mother, Edie Hayes Linehan. You guys were all great. And the entire Linehan family and community around her truly appreciated your presence, your kind words, your flowers, and all that. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned... Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Yancy, for what purpose do you rise?
You're there to consent to make a brief announcement.
Any objection? You have the floor.
Counsel, especially Counselor Jackson and Counselor Presley, for hosting tomorrow's Black History Month celebration right here in these chambers. Boston is one of the most historic cities when it comes to African-American history. It has the oldest African-American church. It's where Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. spent his formative years. It's where Malcolm X spent his early years. It's where many movements for equality actually began, including the abolitionist movement. So it's altogether appropriate that this body hosts on an annual basis Black History Month. And I invite everyone to join us tomorrow, 12 noon to 2:00 p.m. We will hear from Professor Ronald Sullivan Jr. of Harvard University School of Law. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Counselor Yancy,